Do I hear a motion for minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion to accept, make a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes from the meeting from November fourteenth.
Is there a second? All second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're here for a notice of intent by T.J. A. Sowa. Okay. And this is for Brook Street, the solar array. Okay.
Apologize, I do not have my board or my Yeezo. Our attorney is upstairs discussing the Brook Street extension issue with the planning board, and he will be down.
You've got all your maps and stuff here. It's pretty helpful.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I brought some extra copies as well.
Okay.
So...
Want you to slide one down? Is that right?
So, since the last time...
Set it on the nice parcel where we?
We were before you. We had the comment letter from Nova Armstrong. We revised the plans, and then I received a follow-up response letter from Laura, which had some additional issues. And so, I've scurried to pick up most of those changes on the plan set that I've just rolled out in front of you.
This is from the pay review?
I'm sorry, what?
The issues that she, in the recent pay review?
Correct, yes. Yes. So I have that letter. And I, if the commission is amenable to it, we could go through the outstanding issues. I could either...
Does she have a copy of it?
Of my letter?
Of her letter, yes.
Yes.
Okay, is recent letter?
I do not have a response letter. I felt it was prudent to make the plan changes. Again, I got this, the letter yesterday, late in the afternoon. So I scrambled today to make the plan changes to address her comments. I will follow up to memorialize the changes in a formal letter to Nova Armstrong, discussing exactly the information that I'll be discussing with you guys this evening. So, one of the issues that trickled through most of the review letter, and it was from a previous review letter as well, it was in regards to the site survey, the property lines as depicted on the drawings. And so we've added either plan book references or deed references to all of the property lines for the site in the abutters, and provided the record claim documentation to Nova Armstrong for review, so that they could, you know, see how we compiled the property. We added the survey monuments that were actually found out in the field, the ones that were held and held for line. We had called those out on the plan. We had gone out and conventionally located as opposed to GPS, where the accuracy is, you know, within hundreds of a foot. And we located all of the wetland flags that created a jurisdictional area inside of the project site, if that makes sense. The remaining flags we had previously located as GPS, we left on there just for clarity, for graphical purposes. But we added a line type in the legend that shows the difference of the wetland lines, GPS versus conventional. The conventional is a dash with two dots, and the GPS are the, the flags that are out in the back of the property that don't have an impact on the project, if that makes sense. And it's just a dashed line.
So these plans address all of the comments she made of things that she found missing on the plan? Is that what you're telling us right now?
Correct. I mean, we feel, again...
These are revised, revised plans?
These, exactly, yes. These have been, these are revised again per the comment letter I received yesterday from, from Nova Armstrong.
Does she have a copy of this?
She...
I have not looked at that.
She hasn't seen, I finished them literally before I walked out the door, so, you know...
Will you come up and take a peek at these, Laura? You can sit over here, get comfy.
Okay.
When you see the one page, the comments and...
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay, no, I'm just gonna look here at that, give me a minute.
You can point them out to her if you, if you want to.
Alright.
Okay.
So, we provided all the record deed and plan information. And we've also had our PLS stamp the plan. And a lot of the comments were in regards to being able to ascertain the accuracy of the wetland flags and the project impact. And it was a request to have it stamped by a PLS, so we have done that, and that is on sheet two. And if you require wet stamps, let me know, I can arrange to have those delivered as well. But this is a plan that has all of the plan, the plan book references, the deed references, and all of the notes as far as how the property lines were compiled and how the wetlands were located. So, in the letter that's dated December fourth, I was just gonna go through comment by comment.
That'd be good.
Be as quick as I can. I'm going to speak to the engineering issues, if you will, or the, the site design issues. So comment number one, I'm gonna respect...
Is this the, page two?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, page two. And it starts at administration, administration and plan comments.
Okay, good.
And so I'm just gonna read the outstanding portion, I'm not gonna bore you with all the rest of it. So, comment one, I'm gonna defer immediately respectfully to Attorney Pacello, and after I'm done with the design and engineering, he'll be able to speak to the legal opinion. Like I noted, we're just before the planning board, and have some additional information to present to the commission in regards to that. Comment two from Nova Armstrong, again, they requested that the plan be stamped by a Massachusetts land surveyor, and we provided that. Comment...
That hasn't been done yet.
It has been. Right here.
That is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Comment three is addressed. The next section, the wetland resource area findings and recommendations. Correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, but I believe that has been addressed.
Correct. Number one has been...
Number one, I'm sorry, yes, number one has been addressed. Number two, again, speaks to the registered professional land surveyor, we provided that, so we feel based on that, number two has been addressed.
You want the A series, A series or C series?
This is all one. So one, Laura said we've addressed by rehanging the flags. This is two here. And so number two, again, is just requesting that in order for them to be able to ascertain the impacts and speak about the plans, they wanted it stamped by a professional registered land surveyor, and we've done that. So I feel two has been addressed. Comment three, we're in agreeance with. They were just noting that from the D series, I think it's flag thirty-three, forty-two, which is way back here, they didn't confirm those in the field because they just don't impact the project. They're far enough away so that these flags don't have jurisdictional area, and we're okay leaving them off of your decision, if you will. And quite frankly, we've, if you wanna take it a step further, we've specifically listed the flags that were located conventionally. It's the entire A and B, both A and the B series out in the adjacent right of ways. We located the finger that extends onto the site in the isolated, that would have the jurisdictional area, and then we located, that's this one, and then we located every flag in the D series until it turns the corner, where the jurisdiction would disappear from within the building footprint, or the solar footprint, if that makes sense. So really, those are the ones that impact the project. Those are the ones that were conventionally located to the accuracy that the PLS has stamped to, and those would be the ones that, you know, if you wanted to limit it to those flags, we would be amenable to that. We're fine with that recommendation. The next section is project findings and recommendations. The first one, again, plans be stamped by a registered land surveyor, we've done that, we feel like that has been addressed. Number two, just noting that the project's subject to the stormwater regulations. GZA is the planning board's reviewing engineer, and they just noted that GZA had requested additional information specific to the stormwater. And again, we just went through the planning board upstairs. The engineering issues have been, excuse me, satisfied. GZA will be providing confirmation of that. The only outstanding issue is access at this time. And again, I'm gonna leave all of that to Attorney Pacella, because that's his area of expertise. Comment three.
That's the, that's the comment where she recommends that we not close the hearing until the planning board's consultant satisfied with the additional information provided? Is that what we're just discussing?
Yes, yes.
And you have provided?
I've provided it to GZA, yep. I gave it to Peter today, we've been working over the beginning of this week.
He hasn't examined and approved it yet?
He hasn't written formal, he hasn't issued a formal letter, but similar to what we're doing with you folks, we did the planning board, we went through item by item, went through, showed on the plans what we, the information that we've added. A lot of it was already on the plans, so just pointing that out. And he was satisfied with the information that he's been provided. I do have a review letter for Peter, which I left copies with the planning board, which I will certainly make available to show the additional information we require, we provided to address GZA's comments, and then hopefully...
Does he plan on responding?
Yes, 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 yes. And so again, we will provide that to the commission. Comment three. The pit construction staging area in stockpile, we just pointed out, we, they're not known at this time, but there's a note for hitting, for hitting them from within jurisdictional areas. And that, just noting that the SWIP be provided to the commission prior to the start of the building permit process, which is a pretty typical condition. And so, again, we would just ask that the commission allow us to submit the SWIP prior to the start of construction, prior to the start of the building permit. And again, that gives us just a chance to link it to the site contractor and make the SWIP a little more site-specific. Comment four. The clearing and grubbing within the fenced area. I believe this comment has been addressed, where we've added a note basically saying that outside of the fenced area, we're not gonna be doing any grubbing in an effort to minimize land disturbance. It will just be clearing.
Cluttering and cutting?
Yes, there will be clearing, cutting, there'll be, we'll get to it, but there'll be some pretty infrequent maintenance in that area. Inside the fence, we're gonna need to clear and grub. And I don't think that there are any areas outside the fence that would require clearing and grubbing, with exception to any work associated with, say, the access road or something to that effect, or any stormwater facilities. But for the most part, all of the stormwater are located within the fence, so that would hold true. Particularly out back, up along the larger BBW. Comment five, I believe, so comment five, there are a couple comments within. The first two have been addressed as far as providing additional narrative, demonstrating compliance with the stream crossing standards. We added a detail showing the bank impacts, added some additional dimensions. We submitted a construction sequence for the culvert installation. And there are one, two, three, four pieces of information that Laura had requested be added to that. The first one was just removing the reference to straw, the reference to straw wattles from bullet item number two. So we've gone ahead and removed that from the schedule. The next one was just pointing out that the southern portion of the crossing... So they had brought up a good point. How are you guys gonna excavate for this footing without causing direct impacts? And so, similar to the test pits, and a note has been added on step three, that we're gonna be providing a temporary crossing in the form of a steel road plate to avoid direct impacts, to allow the equipment to walk across, excavate this from the south side, make sure that everything is, you know, upwind and that, you know, we're not, it's, lessens the potential for impact during this, the excavation of this, the southern footing for that, culvert and the wing walls themselves. There was a note regarding, or there was a note that just said unsuitable soils shall be removed and disposed of. And so again, they asked, what about excess materials? So, in addition to the unsuitable soils encountered during the excavation for the footings for the crossing, but also any excess material, that step three has been revised to require that to be removed off-site. And so, you know, again, that kinda speaks back to the stockpiles. But with them being off-site, it's a, it's a moot point at that juncture. And then the last one was the dewatering. Based on the shallow depths in the test pits, we don't anticipate it, but if it is, Nova Armstrong asked us, or said that it should be a condition of approval to notify the commission. So again, I just added that in step three, that if dewatering is required, the contractor shall notify the conservation commission. Number seven, onto the, the next item. And if anyone has any questions or comments, you know, feel free to interject, please. Number seven is the, just points out that we propose to install the security fence, construction stormwater management features within fifty feet of the wetland resource area. Dyton Biolaw requires no structures constructed within fifty feet. You know, we've, when we planned the project out, you know, we took great care into making sure that there were no panels located within the fifty feet. We located, with exception to the point where we're crossing the actual stream, the majority of the project is located outside of the fifty feet. Again, today I was able to make some additional changes, which at the northeast corner, at the outflow or the riprap associated with basin one A, our fence and our riprap just, just barely creeped over the fifty foot, I've pulled that out. There was a section of roadway up here, I was able to pull that out of the fifty feet. When we first designed this array, we had the equipment pad up front due to a number of different reasons, primarily for the feedback we received as part of planning. We put it back here. In addition, the fire department wanted access to the rear of the field within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. That's the longest hauls reel length he has. So Chief McGee asked us to put that. We initially put that back here, and I sent him a plan, and we had proposed to do a reinforced vegetated access path. But he was extremely adamant that we provide gravel. And so we've changed that to gravel. So, this area, we still have a small portion of the fence and the roadway within the fifty foot. You know, but we would ask the commission to take that into consideration. And, you know, as a whole, we've, you know, relocated stuff and made changes. This, you know, to pull this out of the fifty feet, we're asking that the commission, I guess, work with us, for lack of a better term, on this particular area. Because this, the hardscape, if you will, is really what was required by the fire department. It's important to point out, I think, that the fence, as we proposed it, has an eight-inch gap to allow wildlife to pass. And so really, you know, the fifty-foot, no structures. You know, we were honoring that with the, with the panels and the equipment pad itself. There was a small piece of riprap back here as well, where we were able to move the outlet associated with that pond outside of the fifty feet. So, the remaining items are really to the tail end of the field and associated with the access out front. Item number eight discusses the seed mixes we've proposed. We proposed a pretty robust seed mix with a variety of plant, not only plants and grasses. Nova Armstrong had asked that we limit mowing to once a year, preferably once every three years, and in the winter months. And that would be in an effort to allow the grass and plant communities to reseed and establish themselves. So we are trying to find a balance. Of course, mowing it once every three years, or even just once a year, particularly in the winter, and especially within the solar array itself, is problematic from an operational standpoint and an access standpoint. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that one of the, in addition to the gravel access road, the fire chief wanted to make sure that we added in our operation and maintenance plan vegetation management, particularly around the access road, because his, he didn't want it to get overgrown. And so, you know, we don't intend to come in and mow this thing to a three-inch grass height on a frequent basis, but we are looking for, you know, we're amenable to mowing restrictions, but they can't be such that it affects, you know, the operation or safe egress in and out of the rear of the field and the operation and performance of the facility itself. So, looking at the seed mixes provided, you know, the, a lot of them are perennials, and they should be able to, I mean, I think twice a year would be a good compromise, and doing it in early spring and late fall. That would miss the nesting bird period, that's in, I think, April fifteenth to June thirtieth, I believe, per Audubon. That would miss that window, allowing, you know, wildlife to utilize that habitat. It would, cutting it in the early spring and late fall would also give the vegetation time to bounce back for the winter months, where you have some of the critters actually nesting and actually some...
Well, I think they based their recommendation on the fact that if you cut the plants before they flower and seed, then you don't get regrowth of the plants. You might have some perennials, but all of them aren't perennials.
The majority of them are. I think there are, other than the plant species, I think twenty-five are perennials and only five are annuals. And some of those also don't require seeds. They spawn in the root zone. The roots will grow and create little nodules, and those will actually grow. So it's not only the reseeding. And again, you know, mowing in the winter, I don't know, you get to a certain time of year and you just can't mow. I mean, you, so I, I just think that if, if the commission want, we would certainly be amenable to absolutely restrict mowing outside of the fenced area. But the area that's within the fence, I mean, we need some kind of a mowing schedule that, you know, yes, it promotes wildlife habitat and will ensure that the plant, diverse plant communities will thrive, but it also needs to make, it also needs to make sense from an operational standpoint. And so again, we just would look to find a balance working with Nova Armstrong, to find twice a year where we're able to go in and mow. And based on the species, and I could certainly get, again, I didn't have a lot of time, but I have been speaking with Goddard Consulting, our wetland scientists, they reviewed the seed mixes that we provided, and they feel that there's enough diversification, particularly when different types of species go to seed and bear the seeds, that the communities that we proposed are going to thrive, and you're not gonna be left with a patch of crabgrass, yes.
How high are these panels off the ground, or the lowest portion?
Two and a half feet.
Okay, and how, and what is the height of, of this vegetation that you're planting? It's not gonna be four or five feet high, it's gonna be low vegetation that would still be less than the two and a half feet that, of the lower end of your panels?
Some of the species, if they're allowed to thrive, you know, they're gonna grow certainly more than a foot.
Well, but none of that is going to interfere with your collection of radiation? No, I'm looking at, you want twice a year, and it seems like twice a year is going to wipe out a tremendous amount of the late blooming and, and seed producing of, of these plants. And all of that, whether it's the flowers for the bees or the, or the seeds for the, for the birds, whatever they may be, would certainly be hindered. It seems like on November or early December, mowing wouldn't interfere with any of that.
All the proposals that we've had before were, were grass-based. If you mow grass, you can mow grass, but I don't know if it helps the birds any, but your proposal was with the seed mix. And if it's not gonna work, why?
That's kind of, that's our opinion too. I, if you, if you're not allowing some of the plants to thrive and go to flower, then why include them in the seed mix? Yeah, that's kind of the point, to have them go to flower and to provide that wildlife habitat. That's why you're providing these mixes. And if they're not allowed to get to that point, then, I guess...
Well, that's something that would be written into the algorithm conditions.
Right.
Well, it's something we should discuss right now. I mean, if it's not gonna work, their proposal was with the seed mix.
Right.
If the seed mix is not gonna work, you plant grass.
Or what about just the, the bee mix was mostly clover, that's all low growing. So that's still gonna provide some flowers, and you wouldn't need to mow that as often, as you would.
Differentiate, differentiate some areas where the clover and some of the pollinator mix would be particularly under the panels and then maybe outside of the fenced area. Introduce the edge habitat seed mixes that were...
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we...
And then, and then also, if you wanted to, you know, say, a certain distance around the roadway, that you want to have that maintenance in terms of safety, like that, that's important, that you can access the whole array for the, for the fire department. So providing that maybe a, you know, five feet on either side of the roadway and have that be a corridor that you can mow regularly, yeah, then I think that's reasonable.
It wouldn't probably be five feet, it would just be along the edge.
Just along the edge, yeah.
Yeah. To, to, you know, and, and let it grow underneath to, and be mowed less frequently for, for the wildlife, but along the roadway to be maintained more frequently.
Sure. It's reasonable.
Sure, I think that's reasonable. I mean, you know, we're, haven't had a lot of time to work out the fine details, but, but that, you know, we'll, we'll work to get a mowing, a seed distribution plan and operation schedule that Nova Armstrong will approve. Number five was regarding additional info...
Oh, we're on eight, I think.
Nine.
Nine.
So nine is noting an area up in the northeast corner where we had previously erroneous...
Where is this? Isn't northeast on the other end?
No, north is this way on the page.
That's southeast.
This is the northeast.
Yeah.
Laura's pointing plan right.
Orderly.
I thought this, I thought the street went north, so...
No, because he's supposed to be there.
Okay, alright, okay, alright, okay. There's a bend in that road that, that tricked me.
Just the screen for the abutters.
Yes. And so in this area, we had previously shown tree clearing, which we didn't need to do. We've restored that, minimized it. And again, some of the, a lot of the comments received as part of the planning board process were due to visual impacts, and so we proposed a bunch of levels of screening. You know, first and foremost, we had tree plantings. And then due to the lack of the understory in the adjacent forest, we're doing a reforestation to try to beef up the understory. So Nova Armstrong had noted that we were using a cultivar... So, Norah Armstrong had noted that we were using a cultivar, arborvitae, within jurisdictional area. And so, and I didn't have time to confirm this with you, but correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as it's not the green giant, are you okay with going the arborvitae? So, what I've done for clarity is, you can see on the plan here, you have two different planting symbols. You have kind of the open, white ones, if you will, and then you have the darker circles. And those correspond with whether or not they're located within jurisdictional area. And so, all of the plants outside of jurisdiction, we are keeping as the green giant arborvitae because just they grow fast, they're more deer resistant. Anything within jurisdiction, the other symbol, if you will, we've tried to diversify. Instead of going with just all arborvitae, we've tried to diversify it with some white pines and hennock, both of which are native. The forest enhancement areas, we had inadvertently put boxberry on there, and then also winter berry was requested to be removed. So, we replaced winter berry with service berry, common service berry. Apparently, Canadian service berry is a little more available, but we've added a note, particularly for the jurisdictional areas, that any substitution, may be substituted with approval by the conservation commission. And that's really when they go to buy them at the nursery, what's going to be available at that time and what's not. But all of the plantings have been revised so that we're including native species within the jurisdictional areas, whether it be as for screening or the reforestation of the understory. Comment ten, there were four subcomments, they've all been addressed. Comment eleven, formal maintenance plan for the solar facility. We provided one that had a lot of information, and some of it was specific to washing the panels where we say we're not going to use soaps and detergents. And Laura just recommended that be included as a special condition, so we're amenable to that. It falls within our normal operation. And then, the last comment, comment twelve, the, that I already a little spoke to it, but it was in regards to the twenty-foot wide reforestation. They're just pointing out that they would rather not see winter berry or boxwood. So, we removed boxwood, replaced winter berry with the common service berry. And so, we feel that comment twelve has now been addressed.
I want to go back to something that you had said much earlier about a cut in the fence for wildlife to go through.
Yes.
Now, is that just in one ear? Is that, is that like for deer to go through in?
No, no, it's an eight-inch gap off the ground, and it's, it's intended for smaller wildlife, and it will run around the entire perimeter.
Okay, so, whether it's rabbits or turkeys, well, they're going to fly over if they want it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, baby turkeys, maybe.
They're not a baby for too long.
Comments?
Uh, so, the only thing that I want to go back to is comment number seven.
Same thing?
Page six.
Page two?
Yep. So, they did revise the plans, as Chris said, to remove the gravel access road out of the fifty-foot for the most part, except for in the back corner. And it is, it's the, in the past, the commission has not allowed structures to be constructed in the fifty-foot, no build, and they are proposing a permanent gravel roadway within the fifty-foot no build. So, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to go back to, to point that out again, and...
In my humble opinion, a roadway is not really a structure. I mean, a fence, even that, we've allowed fences in, in the fifty. If, when we first adopted that part of the bylaw, it wasn't worthy enough. We intended structures to be things that grows out of the ground and people use.
So, that's the way...
So, that particular part, I don't, I don't take any umbrage with it.
All right, so, that's the only, that's the only big thing.
These here would be structures here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that's the only big, or big comment that I guess isn't that big of a deal. So, the only other things that, I mean, we still recommend that we wait till GZA, that the commission wait till GZA has provided their final comments.
And I agree with that. And we have another meeting next week, and you're on it. I, I didn't take your name off because I wasn't sure how tonight would go, and it went about, actually better than I thought it would.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, there were a lot of comments, and you only had a day and a half or whatever to answer them, and I think you've done a hell of a job in that so far. But, final approval, I, I want myself, I'm sure the rest of the board does as well, to have Peter's comments.
Sure.
Even if it's only a letter directed to us, if it's not all the comments, if he's planning on approving them, the man of his word. But, something concrete.
Uh, Charlie, I know I'm a screw for this, but I'd like to make one comment on his intermittent stream and all. He's like recommending steel plates or whatever. I would feel it should be on digging mats. That way, you've got space. If something happens, you've still got access. Digging plates only, I mean, a road plate's anywhere from three-quarters of an inch to an inch. An excavator sitting on that, he can push it in. A regular digging mat, you have some height. The machine will stay out of it, and you can dress up the area when you're done.
We, we, we would, if the commission had a preference on what we would use to temporarily perform that, we would certainly be amenable to implementing whatever you wanted. I will say that that particular piece of the excavation, I'm not the contractor, but more than likely, if I'm going to try to limit my footprint, I'm going to be using a mini excavator, similar to the one we used during the test pits. And we had a beefy road plate, and it, it wouldn't sit on the road plate to do the work. It would just use it to temporarily cross it. But again, if you would rather see mats, or it's really whatever the commission would want to see, we...
Well, I mean, if, if something's going to be drawn up, and, and it's here right now, you know, if that's put in there as a recommendation. I mean, like I say, it, I don't even know how wide, how wide's the area they're working on, the intermittent stream?
Uh, it's roughly eighteen feet wide, more or less, the width of it.
I mean, you'd have to work from one side to the other.
Correct, yes.
If it's going to be with a smaller machine, you bring in a bigger machine, it can reach across, but...
But then, my bucket width is so big, so...
No, that's the thing, yeah.
You're right, so it's a balance. But anything, you know, if there was a condition that the commission wanted to add, that would, uh, it could be something as simple as prior to the start of the installation of the crossing, the contractor shall admit, shall submit a plan for temporary crossing to the commission for review and approval. And it would show, you know, at that point, we'll know, when you're out there, you can almost see the spots that, okay, this is where I'm going to walk in. This is where I'm going to, I'm not going to walk in here because there's a tree right there. And this is the very preliminary phases of construction. And so, we're really going to try to limit everything before we get the crossing fully constructed. So, that would be a condition we'd certainly be amenable and to including.
Oh, why is the intermittent stream crossing that location?
Uh, I think it's only six feet, six and some change.
Six feet? What else is still in charge?
There is a one-one town.
Yeah, it's between six and seven feet wide at the widest. So, at one end, it's down to five feet. It gets at its widest, you know, about two-thirds of the way as you go east to west, and it probably gets to about six and a half feet, and then starts tapering down again to about six feet at the western end. So, it's really not that wide.
Don't think a steel plate is going to work there?
Well, I mean, yeah, if you can stay, but it depends on the machine, Charlie.
Yeah.
And I mean, it depends on a small, many...
And the thickness of the steel plate.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I say, if it's in there at an angle, it's going to cut in.
We use a road plate, and that's, that's been, that's in there, a steel road plate. So, it's going to be a, a road plate that you see for, you know, trench construction and the road.
Well, you think a wood mat would be...
Well, I mean, they're, you know, like I said, it all depends on the machine, Charlie. You know what I'm saying? But I mean, if, if you get road mats, and, and you're saying, what, seven foot's the widest?
Yeah.
Uh, you get a road mat, they're four-by-twelve, four-by-sixteen. You can turn it sideways and straddle the whole thing. For tools and gun, the machine can work in the middle, reach on either side. Can't do that with a road plate. You know what I'm saying? Or you can work off one side.
Yeah, I mean, sure, I mean, again, we would, either way, it would, it would...
Depends on the whole thing and who's doing it and what you got for the machine, but, you know.
I'd kind of like to ask you about having the contract notify us on what he's trying to do and why.
Well, you bet if it was too wide for it, then not wide enough.
Yeah.
Mat would be fine. Take more than one.
Yeah, get two, you know, one for each track. I mean, unless you got, you know, go up on one from one side. But like I say, without knowing the machine, you know. But I mean, I can just move it in there.
You don't care what it is.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, we care. I mean, it's, it's got to make sense, you know, it's got to make sense for everyone, so it's really...
Depends on the time of the year and when you're going to do the job. Go out there and do it now, you better go out there with, with digging mats. You know, if it's dry like it was in the summer, you can go out there with a steel plate, so, you know, I mean, it's...
Now, this should be far equipment to cross that's going to eliminate trees and...
No, this would just be the point, just to, so we could actually install this crossing. Once the crossing's installed, we're able to cross the stream without any risk of impacts. It's getting, you know, we can install this, the northern portion of the crossing, the footing's required, but it's the southern portion, so how do you do that? And so, you know, we were just talking, attempt, some kind of temporary crossing, allow us to get the machine across, dig this out, do this work. It would get back, this work would be complete, and then we'd be able to have a permanent crossing. And then, you know, the, you know, the, the type of machine, the, the method of permanent crossing, you know, there is language on the plan, number one, on the covert construction sequence, schedule work during dry, low-flow season. So, again, we would, whatever, if the commission's looking for it, and when that point in time comes, if the commission's looking for something, I feel like the special condition would be your mechanism to basically say, okay, no, don't use a plate, use a mat. Or, you know, make sure you use a mini excavator, so, and use, you know, the, you know, don't use a four-foot-wide bucket if you don't need it.
Is it open to...
I'm, I'm set for now.
There was one more that I just remembered. Uh, we never went back to number one.
Oh, yes, so, um, with that, and that hinges around access through the Brook Street extension. Um, and, you know, again, this is being discussed and reviewed by the planning board's legal counsel. We have our attorney here this evening to speak to it. But really, you know, the plans before you and the task of the commission is the, the effects or the impacts based on the interests identified, not only in the Wetlands Protection Act, but the bylaw. And they're pretty specific to wetland issues. And so, I'm just hoping the commission understands that we are hammering out the access on the Brook Street extension as part of the planning board process. And I'm just hoping and encouraging the commission that you don't get, hopefully, the assertion whether or not this project meets the performance standards identified in the Wetlands Protection Act and the, and the town bylaws. I feel like we've demonstrated that, and I feel like access is a separate issue. You know, if, once access is determined, if that requires us to change how we're accessing the site, then we will be coming back before the commission with that revision. So, with that, Attorney Joe Pachella?
We could condition it so that if they ran into trouble with the crossing, they'd have to revisit.
That's true, yeah, you could absolutely condition that. You could put that in a special condition.
You all set, or do you want to hear about access? I don't want to belabor it.
Time for questions.
Well, I have a question, Chris, about the ap, the planting that you're going to do on the north side.
Yes.
Could you go back to that please, please?
If you mind everybody here, if you sign anything. Okay, so that's, that's in the northeast part.
Yes, so, the last time we talked and on the last plans that were there, it said arborvitae's be green giants.
Yes.
That's been changed on the north side?
Well, there's still arborvitae's, it's just a species change.
Is this the one that is not deer resistant?
No, they are, they are deer resistant. The green giant, it's called the green giant because it grows, it was genetically modified to have it increased proper.
So, how tall are these when you plant them?
Uh, these, I believe we specified a twelve-foot height. And they're going to be higher than the fence. Eight to ten feet, and the fence is seven feet high. So, these, the installed planting height will be higher than the fence.
Okay, so, the installing, and the other plants are, and you said these are deer resistant?
Yes.
Okay, and the other plants that you're planting, so, is it not the double row of arborvitae's?
It is, it's still a double row of arborvitae's along the north side. And then, in addition to that, we're extending twenty feet into the woodland to remain. We're not going to be removing any trees, but we're going to be selective planting a spread of native species to help improve the understory. And help, so you don't, because right now, if you were to stand out in the Brook Street extension and look through, you can see clear through at eye level. And so, instead of seeing clear through and seeing a wall of arborvitae's, we're trying to soften that a little bit by implementing some native forest species that are similar to what's already out there, and will hopefully help blend that in, but also provide a more, a thicker understory.
So, these are taller than the ones you proposed before?
Which one, I'm sorry, which one?
Than the green giant?
No, these have always been the same height. All we did was remove the name green giant.
Or is their ultimate height gigantic?
Uh, I don't, I think they can grow up to twenty feet. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a percent sure.
I mean, there's some arborvitae that grow fifty, sixty feet.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they get up there.
Gigant, it just gives me that, the same feeling.
Will that be in the maintenance plan, maintaining those plants?
Yeah, we have a vegetation, we have a vegetation maintenance plan, which we're going to be changing with some seed mix stuff, unless it's a, unless you're comfortable doing it as a condition of approval.
That'll also make it to conform to the bylaw that requires it to be opaque and not seeable or, or visible from the street?
Yes, yes, that's why we've gone through and, and done all the extensive plantings. Not only the screening plantings, but also an effort to blend those plantings in with the reforestation. And then, we've added like black vinyl along those stretches as well, not really conservate, but just...
Seems more extensive than, you know, I have one going in behind my house, and it seems more extensive than that plant.
The black vinyl you were just mentioning, is that black vinyl on the chain fence? Or is it black vinyl webbing?
It's all of it, and so, the posts, it would be like a pool fence. It's covered with like the little rubber black...
Webbed in between the...
No, 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 it's just the fence material itself. It's not the slats, it's not the slats. If, yeah, if we weren't proposing the screening, then maybe the slats that, I mean, you drive some of the, by some of the projects, and you can still see there's a security fence there. Our idea is to make it so that you can't see the security fence.
Can I just go up there just...
And that would conform with the town's bylaw that requires it to be opaque and not visible from the street?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we just went through what we hope is our final planning board meeting, and we've addressed all of the concerns. We've, I had a nineteen-page letter that addressed the approval criteria of site plan approval, the special permit, and a development impact statement. the special permit and a development impact statement, speaking to a litany of issues and one of which was blending in with the neighborhood characteristics and all that stuff.
What is this?
That's just, we're doing grading to kind of keep the rainwater from washing across the road, basically.
Okay, because you had said that the existing plants were on a burn.
No.
That's what you said the last time, that our plants were on a burn.
No, well, we were talking about this. We were talking about screening and when we were talking about, it's the eastern line here is where we had put these plants on a burn here.
Well, that gentleman told me that they were here, if you, if you can even review the thing. But, and just, I know it kind of doesn't go with this, but did you say that this is a 100-foot from the?
From which?
From the panels to the?
To the property line?
To the property, your prop, their property line.
I mean, the panels are over 100 feet, the panels.
Is it 100 feet by law and then you're doing over 100?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a, because it's residential?
Well, no, the solar setback requires that the solar panels and equipment pads be located in excess of 50 feet from the side and rear lines and 100 feet from the front line, independent of what district it's located. It's the, it's the overriding bylaw. And so they required 100 feet at the front and we've set them back at 110, a little over 110 feet.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
We are, you are waiting for the decision of the?
We're going to continue this until, now it's going to continue at least till next Wednesday, when we have our regular meeting and we're going to see what comes in from ZBA and maybe a more formal write-up by you, Laura.
I was going to say, she seemed so rushed today. That just wasn't fair, that she's, you know.
I'll have a, I'll have a week to review these, like do a complete review of them. Your revised drawings and then your revised, whatever you're going to be submitting that's revised. So.
Okay, are we all set with today's?
I'll make a motion that we continue tonight's hearing till 12:00.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor? Okay, then due to next week.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Lynn. How many copies of the, I was just going to give you the plans now, if that works for you guys.
And Chris, have the plans, plans changed again?
Yes, I received a comment letter yesterday. And so in an attempt to make this evening's hearings as productive as possible, basically worked all night and then into today to revise the plans again, to pick up all these changes and add all the information, just so we could go by item by item.
So are there new pictures we need to see of the plan or?
I mean, this is the latest plan set here.
Have the boundaries changed at all? Have the?
Nope.
Do they have other things under there, Jim?
I don't know.
You want to take one?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take this.
You're going to have two of them, all three.
I don't think I need to, that's yours.
I gave all the copies of the letter I had for Peter away upstairs. We'll send that to you first thing in the morning so you have, whoever responded to him. And then I'll make sure I get you a letter, just recapping basically everything I went through this evening. Formalize it if, I would imagine you want that as a formality.
You should be able to get a copy of this plan from the planning board.
And they just received it today. Like I said, this is all, this is literally hot off the press.
What affects us on that new plan?
Does anything affect us on that new plan?
I mean, it's almost the same that you saw last time with exception to switching out the species within the jurisdictional area. That was requested as part of this review for conservation.
Okay, almost, anything else? Almost is the exact word that. Well, you just said almost.
You want to talk at the bar?
Laurie, the lawyer doesn't want to.
Do I have a motion, Jim, to close?
We've already taken care of this. I just think some correspondence is still done.
There you go. Okay, a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting at 8:30?
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay, see you next Wednesday. And then on Thursday, you get one of these.